God, you're leaving this is the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's reading the resolution?
Ms. Owens.
Yeah, if you want to come, if you want to come right up in the center here and face
out, that's the best way to do it, right there.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott, for asking me to be here tonight to read this resolution. This is a resolution honoring school nutrition staff by the Anderson County Board of Education. Whereas the Board of Education and the Director of Anderson County Schools know and understand the work of the school nutrition staff members is extremely important and vital to the success of the school, and whereas school nutrition employees are often the first ones at the school to start the day off right with good, healthy meals for the students and the only meals some students get daily, whereas school nutrition staff members are an essential part of our efforts to meet the needs of the whole child, and whereas school nutrition employees work hard to promote a healthy eating lifestyle for our staff and students each day. And therefore, be it resolved that this board acknowledges and expresses its appreciation to each school nutrition staff member in our school district, and be it therefore resolved that January 7th, 2021, is hereby established a School Nutrition Staff Appreciation Day in all Anderson County schools. Be it further resolved that the board encourages each principal, each school, and each community to participate in the celebration of these important school employees, approved by the Anderson County Board of Education in regular session on the 14th day of January 2021.
Ms. Burrow, if you could come up here and get this, if you'll go ahead and sign it, Dr. Burrow.
In December the 7th, what day did we?
We acknowledged it on the 7th, but the day's the 14th, is that? I think it was, I think that's the day that the state has.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought we'd already celebrated.
You could give you this, your picture too. Congratulations here. Here, come here, come here, you gotta get your picture too, over here.
Now, if you want to say a few words?
I'm good, I just hope that everyone realizes that our program has so many wonderful people working in it, and we've actually been short-staffed all year, and honestly, they've risen to the occasion time and time again, and I couldn't be prouder or more honored to work with, with our staff and our team. And we do appreciate just the fact that we are able to serve the students in our county and each day when they look at you and smile, it just, it makes it all worthwhile. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution.
Second. Move and second to approval of the resolution, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, no, motion carries. It's a great pleasure, we introduce some of our outstanding athletes from Anderson County at this time. Gary or you or Davey gonna do this?
I'm gonna bring Coach Gillum up.
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna bring Coach Gillum up.
We've got, we've got the camera set where you can see it over there, where it'll be on the TV, there you go.
Okay, great.
You're on it.
Awesome. First and foremost, thank you so much for the invitation and for the recognition of seven student athletes at Anderson County High School as they were selected All-State in the State of Tennessee for the 2020 season. I'm gonna bring Coach Gillum up, he, he's done an outstanding job for us, as y'all know, since 2009 when we brought him on. This is the, this group of young men right here, they're the winningest four-year group in Anderson County High School history in football. They've won 43 games in four years, which is an outstanding feat and, and has a lot of folks that are behind that to make that happen, but we thank y'all for your support. And at this time, I want to welcome Coach Davey Gillum, the head football coach.
Do we want to bring them up?
Yep.
First of all, again, I'd like to say thanks for recognizing our boys. They do put in a lot of time, as all of our student athletes do. This group, not only were they the most successful, we had a great year this year, as they've had great careers, but we lost three games this year, all three of them on the last play of the game. I don't know if that's ever been done before, but they're just a hair away from taking our program to that next level and maybe getting a state championship, but they had great years. Before I recognize these three, I'll recognize Stone Cummins, he's an All-State linebacker for us. He can't be here tonight because he's wrestling, he's also an All-State wrestler, but one of the hardest workers we've ever had in our program, just a great, great student athlete. All these guys not only are good on the field, but they're good in the classroom, good community guys, set examples, really do a great job of servant leadership. They're at our little leagues on the weekend, at our kids' games, things like that, really showing what it means to be a community and serve. Then I got Josh Miller here, Josh was an All-State wide receiver, statistically maybe had the best season any receiver in Anderson County's ever had, and that's saying a lot, we've had some good ones. Just a fabulous year, was a great leader for us, never missed a day, putting in hours, extra work every day. And then we got Daniel Bethel, he's an All-State punter, he'll be playing at Ole Miss next year, was a five-star athlete. A lot of times, kickers and punters don't get the recognition that, you know, quarterbacks' receivers do, but I can say that just like Stone and Josh and Gavin put in extra hours, this guy traveled the country for camps for the last five years, he's putting in hours on his own, even now, he's out there kicking hundreds of balls a day, just fabulous work ethic, fabulous family, and really has earned where he's at as well. And then we got our young pup Gavin Noe. As far as I remember, and I don't want to make anything too, we've, we've had some good players at Anderson County over the last 37 years, but to my recollection, we've never had an All-State sophomore. You know, I know he's got a great family lineage at Anderson County, his brother and his dad were great football players, but he's already an All-State football player, so we're hoping to see him again up here the next couple of years. But all, all four of those guys, just great student athletes, great competitors, and for what we're trying to produce and competitive young men that work hard, think of others, and serve their community, really, it couldn't be more fitting for these guys.
And we have the volleyball video, we ready to play that? Okay. Okay, great, we'll play the volleyball video from Mr. Downs, recognizing the volleyball girls for their All-State honors as well.
Which one was it? Minimize your browser, it's the parking.
Hey, guests, for Dr. Parrott, thank you for giving us this time, but we recognize some special individuals here at Anderson County High School. Thank you for letting us recognize these All-State players, our full all-gathered, just recognized, congratulations, to be in that outstanding season. We will recognize some of the special individuals who made All-State this year. This is some of our volleyball team members, they were, they are our girls volleyball team to a championship run this year, where they failed the double field, a championship game. These three young ladies made All-State, we just recognized recently, they are all involved in club volleyball and had practice tonight, so we wanted to do this, so you go off and recognize them. But I want to introduce first, Maggie Rowland, Maggie's a senior, All-State player. Maggie will be making her college announcement, where she's going to be playing very soon, she will be playing next year at the collegiate level, so we're super proud of Maggie. Next is Morgan McMurry, Morgan is a two-time All-State volleyball player, she made All-State last year as a junior and then this year her senior year. Morgan signed a scholarship to play at Rebecca University in Nashville, so she'll be going off to Rebecca after she graduates from Christian High School, so we're super proud of her. And then last but not least is Lila Freeman, Lila's a junior here at Anderson County High School, and she made All-State this year for her play and a championship run, so we're super proud of Lila, thank you for letting us recognize them, and it's nice for me. Go Aces.
Once again, thank y'all so much for your recognition, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, congratulations.
Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
See y'all soon.
Yep. Congratulations, fellas.
I'll come back and update you on some stuff we're doing.
Take care.
Persons to be heard.
Hey, you're good.
There is none, being none, approval of the agenda.
Much we approve?
Second. Moving second to approval of the agenda, discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Approval of consent agenda.
Still moved.
Motion made in second approval of consent agenda, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Executive approval, there was none this month, comments from the chair, there is none this month.
I understand that.
Things have been awfully quiet. Comments from student board members?
Thank you, Chairman. So this semester at Clinton High School, everybody's been doing all they can to set up this semester for our success, to finish this school year strong. We've increased the number of our students taking dual enrollment classes, which are classes that give you both high school and college credit, and we've even created a new dual enrollment class. What we really want to do is build in, start building in support systems for students who are new to taking college classes, so that they don't feel alone if they're taking a hard class. We can connect students who have taken those classes before with students who haven't, so that they can have the resources they need to succeed. So that's something we've been doing. 71.4% of our Tennessee Promise seniors filed their FAFSA for federal student financial aid, and 74% of total seniors filed it, so. Also, three new ACT prep flex block classes were created to help keep preparing our students to be college-ready, score higher on the ACT. And 10th grade pre-ACT meetings have been a success. These meetings were initially designed to help people interpret their ACT scores, so that they can really focus on the subjects they need to work on. They yield results because fourth, four of our 10th graders took the ACT, the actual ACT, for the first time in December, and three of those students reached the benchmarks, so they'll graduate with honors. And 10th grade is really early to take the ACT, most people take it their junior year, so we're very proud of them. Last but not least, there has been a new girls' empowerment group started at the school, my, our counselor, Mrs. Napier, and Dr. Naomi Asher. The group focuses, they meet once a month, they discuss life skills, overpowering, overcoming obstacles, and professionalism. Its goal obviously is to empower girls to be successful in their futures, so we're very excited to see where that will take us. Thank you.
I have a fairly short list of some things I want to talk about tonight. So first of all, the Boys and Girls AC Mavs basketball team, they're playing tonight, and it's actually streaming on Facebook Live, or no, that was, I think it was Tuesday night, actually, and they're playing Powell on Friday night. So if you can't make it to the game, I don't think they're having fans attendance, it might just be families, but if you can't attend, you can watch it on Facebook Live. Another thing is our winter formal, I talked about it a few, a few meetings ago, it's actually supposed to be this month, I think last week, but unfortunately, we had to postpone it, and we're hoping February 13th could be a potential date for that. Hopefully, it doesn't get pushed back too far, so we can actually call it a winter formal instead of a spring formal. Another big thing is there's several scholarship opportunities for Anderson County students, which is great news, and there's, some of them are just for AC graduates. It's great news for our seniors that are looking for scholarship opportunities and a chance to save some money for college. Another thing is our, as Kate mentioned, ACHS students and Clinton students are enrolled in many dual enrollment classes, and it's actually 450 hours this semester that students are enrolled in at AC through Rome State with the help of our guidance counselors at AC. I just want to recognize these students for working hard and getting a jump on their post-secondary education. And last but not least, I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work, getting us back not just in school, but on campus. And as a student, I can speak for many others when I say that there's a big difference being in school, interacting with fellow students and teachers and staff members, as opposed to just sitting at home behind a computer screen on Zoom all day. It's a much better learning environment to be there, and I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work to make that possible. Thank you.
I do want to thank the student representatives for keeping us informed on what's going on in the school, because I think that's one of the best things the board has done, is hear, hear from the students.
I agree.
Directors report.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. Mine too will be short this month, as you know, we did go to virtual the last couple of days of the, before Christmas break. That really wasn't due to the high number of COVID cases, it was due more to the lack of substitute teachers, but that is, that's getting better. A couple of things that we've done is tried to let some of the schools hire an extra assistant to try to help with that, because they're on staff all day long, and, and our, our teachers are doing an amazing job about if they need to help cover a class or some things like that, or we've had some schools even send some people from their schools to another school to help. So I, I can't tell you how proud I am of our leadership at our schools and our teachers and people, just, and, and I agree with Preston, students being in class is the best place, and we want to make sure we can do it safely, and, and they're doing a great job, a lot of the things we have in place with our mask mandates and things like that, a great thing. As you do know, that, the, through our federal stimulus package that was passed back in December, Anderson County Schools is going to be, the grant will be $5.2 million that we can use. It goes into two buckets, it goes into a learning loss bucket, and it goes into a, a student health and safety bucket, and, and we're going to be doing some upgrades, I've met with the director of maintenance, Mr. McCamey, and we're going to be talking about that, the other directors, I sent you all out an email and gave you a packet on that for next month, and I, again, I think we're in a great place with the facilities, with our curriculum and everything like that. The other thing, our nurse manager, she has been working really hard to make sure that we're first in line when our staff get the vaccine. We have put in an application with the board to be a, with the State Board of Health to actually be a place where we get the vaccine, and we're going to be working with a, a drive-through shot. Dr. Burrow is going to be our attending physician to help us with that, and, and I think that's the way we'll do it. We, our plan is to use one of our weather, inclement weather days to do it, maybe on a Friday, and do a drive-through at one of our schools where our staff can all come through and get the shot, and then go back to their school, or if they, you know, sometimes they have some reaction, if they do have some mild symptoms, they got that weekend to recover, but I think that's going to be our next step to really and truly putting this COVID behind us, is getting our staff vaccinated. And that's all I have, Dr. Burrow.
We don't have a date set yet.
Don't have a date set yet, no.
Will that go through the state before you'll have a date?
Yes, yes, the, the state will send us a date, and then we have, whenever they put us on there, Catherine said that there's a four-day window of where we can give that shot, so if we, if we was to get the stuff on a Saturday, then we have four days to do it, so we might have to do that day on a Tuesday or Wednesday or something like that, but we're hoping that it comes toward the end of the week and we can do it on a Thursday or Friday. And the good thing about that is if we spread it out very much, if we spread it out a long ways, then in two months or 28 days, you have to give those others, it's, it's now you spread that out for two weeks, so if we can do them all at one time, we can all come back at the same day and get that other shot, so.
Do we know which vaccine we're going to get?
No, not right now. We, we will not get the, I, I think we will not get the Pfizer, the one that
Pfizer.
That takes like the 80 below, we've had to, they're working with Clay, we have to get a freezer, but it's the one that, just go, the Moderna, is that it?
Moderna.
Moderna, I think that's the one we probably will get, because it doesn't have to be as cold.
Okay.
The other thing, just to kind of, that too, is, is we've got, Ms. Crawford is working on getting everything ready for our, our board retreat the last of February, so we've got all that stuff, she's working on getting everything together. I'll have you all in an agenda at the February board meeting, I'll give it to you before that, so you can vote on some things we need to do in that time. Another thing that, and this is very preliminary, just got off the phone, a conference call with the State Board of Education this afternoon, and there was a bill filed today in the, in the Senate to do a 2% raise for our teachers starting in January, and then do 2 more percent starting in July. So I, as you know, that only pays for part of it and things like that, but I think if, if that is, that might be a real possibility, and I'm thinking that might be, I'm hoping we can do that and move some things around, I know Theresa and me had a conversation about it, so that would be starting next year, all of our staff would get a full 4% pay raise going forward, and, and I think they, they, TEA has asked for 10%, I think that's probably a little bit overboard, but the great thing about this, again, that we talked about, is not just a one-time bonus, that's recurring funds that we can do that with, so I'll give you more update when I know more about that.
With everything that's going on this year, they certainly deserve it.
Yes, they do. Well, and that doesn't mean that in the end of this year, I know you all still have the bonus on the table, that doesn't mean then this year, we still can't do something with that too.
Right.
Yep.
Dr. Parrott, are we still on for the retreat?
Yes.
And what's that date?
February 27th.
February 27th.
Good.
February 27th and 28th at the Museum of Appalachia.
Well, if the state passes that, that'll make the budget a lot easier to work with.
Yep. And it, that's all I have, Dr. Burrow.
Okay. Committee reports, budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Budget Committee, I don't, Budget Committee met Monday night, and we had a short agenda also, the, we have one appropriation, that is to appropriate the remaining balance of the tobacco grant, that's a grant that comes from the Anderson County Health Department, and is used for smoking cessation information and education, including vaping, so that is $3,574, that's been approved by the Budget Committee, and I, and recommended to the full board for approval, and I so move.
Moving second, approval appropriation 1A, discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell's up here. Mr. Gillen Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey? Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Dr. Burrow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
We have five transfers, 2A is to transfer funds for equipment at Bresel and Grand Oak Elementary for development for the reading recovery teachers, that's $7,500. 2B is to transfer funds that were for transportation to be used for teacher stipends and vocational equipment, that's $29,737. C and D kind of go together, those are revenues from tuition payments for voucher payments from the State of Tennessee, that's for our educating students that are incarcerated. 2C is $18,000, and 2D is $12,000. 2E is Head Start transferring money from, to, for an increase in contracted services, that's $336. Those have all been approved by the Budget Committee and recommended to the full board for approval, and I so move.
Moving second to approval of transfers 2A through 2E, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That is all from the Budget Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Building ground. Mr. Chairman, we had three items on our agenda, the first one was that we met with Gary Terry, and he requested to replace the current scoreboard on their football field with a 16 by 30 LED screen at no cost to the system, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the scoreboard upgrade at Anderson County High School, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Dr. Burrow, the third thing on our agenda is at Grand Oaks Elementary School, we met with the principal, she requested permission to dedicate and name the new gym in Dr. Parrot's honor. She said he had a special interest in the students at the school, and that was, that was her wish for that to be named after her, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the scoreboard upgrade at Anderson County High School, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Dr. Burrow, the third thing on our agenda is at Grand Oaks Elementary School, we met with the principal, she requested permission to dedicate and name the new gym in Dr. Parrot's honor. She said he had a special interest in the students at the school, and that was, that was her wish for that to be named after her, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the two funds for Anderson County High School and Clinton High School, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Dr. Burrow, the third thing on our agenda is at Grand Oaks Elementary School, we met with the principal, she requested permission to dedicate and name the new gym in Dr. Parrot's honor. She said he had a special interest in the students at the school, and that was, that was her wish for that to be named after her, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the naming of the gym at, at Grand Oaks in Dr. Parrot's honor, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I can't think of a better person to name anything after than Dr. Parrot, and certainly he has, there's no better person to name this gym after than Dr. Parrot, but I'm going to stand on my principle of not naming anything after anyone who's still living, so I'm going to abstain from this vote, I would not vote against this, but I'm going to just abstain.
Other discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. One abstaining, motion carries. And, Ms. Chairman, that's all I have, building grounds. Policy committee, Joe?
Got it. Mr. Chairman, they could
Ms. Chairman, that's all I have, building grounds.
Policy committee. Joe?
Got it. Mr. Chairman, the policy committee that Monday night, and we discussed a couple of policies. The first one is the textbook and instructional material. And the change in this is to, I'll read it for you. All the textbooks must be approved by the State Department instead of submitting a waiver to the State Department. We've wanted to do this with just the school submitting it to the board, but now the State Department is asking that the waiver goes to the, or classes that are not already approved. And the board recommended approval, the committee recommended approval to the full board, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the changes in board policy 4.400, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Okay, and the same thing, we canceled, we're deleting policy number 4.401 because that policy has been incorporated into this new policy, 4.400. And the committee will make amended approval on, this will be just the first and final reading, and I so move.
Second. Motion made in second, is that, are we just postponing?
No, no, we're going to delete that right there, that delete policy 4.401.
Okay. Deleting the policy 4.401. Motion made and carries. And second, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, once again, we discussed interrogations and searches, policy number 6.303, and we determined that we needed to get our school board attorney involved. He met with us, to the company back with him. And we are going to go back and rework this and bring it back at a later date. And that, I don't think that needs any action taken. We just put it off for another time.
I would like to comment that when this thing comes back to the board for our policy committee meeting, I think we ought to invite any parents that are interested in commenting on this to kind of make, make sure they know what they're voting on, or what we're voting on.
And students as well.
Yep.
Students as well.
Yeah, I'll make sure I get y'all a copy of it and let you look at it, okay, for the next meeting.
And I really think we ought to put it in the press if we can, and so everybody knows what's...
We will do that.
Very good. Anything else, Joe?
That's the policy committee report.
Okay. Action items.
Dr. Burrow, the FCCRA was a, was a act that was passed by Congress to allow if any of our employees got either COVID or they got contact traced, there was allotment in there that they could get paid for 10 days. And, or if they had to stay home to take care of a child or a parent, there was a certain stipulation that they would get so much in their salary. And we followed that policy through the end of first semester until January 1. And January 1, in the new bill that was passed through Congress, it became an option, that you could eat schools or business could either do it or not. I am asking that you all approve for us to continue the FCCRA paid league through March 31st. The reason I say March 31st, that's as far out as the, the new act will let us go at this time. If they extend it, I would like to extend it. But right now, it, we would like to extend it through March 31st. And that allow, if somebody gets in quarantine or they go home, they're not going to lose pay.
Motion to approve the FCCRA mandate.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the extension of the FF, FCCRA until March 31st, 2021.
Yes.
Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Dr. Parrot, do we have anything else?
That's all I know we have.
We will be adjourned.
See y'all.
Bye-bye.
Bye.